We conclude the items on our agenda and we come to non-adjunct speakers. And the first speaker is Sergio Nabel. Sergio, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council and the citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Sergio Nabel and I reside in Capitol Banner section of this great city. Um, I just want to make an announcement about an event that is coming up. Um, the Virginia Organizing is a nonpartisan social justice, um, network, um, based in Charlotte with a chapter here in Portsmouth and all over the, um, state. They're hosting a dismantling racism workshop. It will be in August. Um, you have to register. You can go to Virginia Organizing website to find out more information. Um, you can, uh, call this number eight four seven nine two two one two one three and speak with the Portsmouth organizer Megan to get more information as well and to register. This is a, this is a free event. However, you do have to register and you will meet with, uh, citizens and representatives from all over the state and other chapters and, you know, the work they have done to discuss race in their cities. And, you know, people of all different walks of life, how they come together and talk to each other and not at each other. Part of, and which leads me to my next point. We've spoken about race, some comments that were made by councilmen. But let's go even further than that. We have a class issue here in this city. We have an issue where we have some that have looked down on those that don't. And those people, and the ones that have are of both races. And some of the comments that they made are despicable and discouraging and hurtful to those that are struggling. And we have some people that use them as pawns in their election campaigns and go and visit when it's time to go get those votes. But any other time you hear them say, "Those people don't vote, we're not going out there." I want to know how many times do those people see them other than election time or other than when they're trying to get something in their favor? Let's be honest, I'm telling you right now, I see through the smoking mirrors and I see through the gangs. I love all, I love all my people here in Portsmouth, I really do. I think you, um, for elected officials, you guys are trying, but let's not use one person as an example without holding others accountable as well. Because see, we'll put the weight on one person, but turn a blind eye to the actions of others. And they go by unnoticed, or some people might think they go by unnoticed. See, people like me who look at both sides of the fence, who pay attention to more than what some people think, who are listening to other people as well, we're not, we're not going to play this game. You know? We, we keep, for some odd reason, you know, all the other cities around us, when you see us on the, when you see them on the news, they're talking about what's new coming to their city, what, you know, how they're growing, how they're expanding, you know, how big companies are targeting them for new headquarters. And then you get the Portsmouth, they all hear about, "Oh, this person is racist," or, you know, th- this type of stuff. When do we change the perception of our city? And I can tell you one way to do that is for people to really start paying attention. Because some people will use the racial issue to mask their own dirt. And let's start, let's not be blind to that. Because see, while they're throwing and kicking up dust in one way, they're doing stuff behind your back too. They might not tell you, but they are. And then you don't find out until it's too late. And then you say, "Oh, what happened? How did this happen? What did this come about?" We have to get out the business of that. So if we're going to play this game of using this issue to hide stuff, then guess what? Somebody has the microscope out. Somebody has their, their glasses on. I might not have mine on right now, but trust me, I, I wear them when it comes to certain issues. Because see, guess what? We got to start really examining stuff for what it really is. You know, a lot of times, my, you know, my friends that live in other cities, they say, "I feel sorry for you for what's going on." That is an embarrassment to me. I, I feel like I'm constantly having to defend my own time. I'll do it until the day I die, but it shouldn't be, "How could you put up with that? Why don't you move? What is going on? What? I mean, we're, we're the oldest city. We cannot be the same city that has had these same problems and still not doing nothing. We, we gotta move forward from this. How do we expect to grow when we constantly have this kind of stuff always in the news? What big company, what big piece of economic development want to come here when we have this embarrassment going on and other embarrassments that don't need the news, but can very easily? So let's stop playing this game. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sue Landerman. She has five minutes. Sue Landerman, you have five minutes. She's followed by, uh, John Aragona. We'll take one speaker at a time.
Hello, my name is John X. Aragona. I moved to Portsmouth about seven years ago. It's solely about beach music awards salvation through the city of Portsmouth. The city of Portsmouth, Mayor, the Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Council Members. The city of Portsmouth has all the components at this very time to reinvent itself as a major niche tourist destination and home to artists, composers, and producers, as well as establish a very viable music and entertainment industry. Portsmouth can go from one of the poorest cities in the state to one of the wealthiest quicker than anyone can imagine. You cannot be successful marketing Portsmouth to the residents of Tyboree. All dynamic cities must have tourists to thrive. Locals don't stay in five-star hotels, eat out every night at fine dining restaurants. Nor do they buy memorabilia and souvenirs to take back home or support or celebrate museums, because there's always tomorrow. Besides, locals are a one-shot deal. For visitors and the rest of Americans throughout the world, there is no tomorrow. New Orleans would have shriveled up like a prune after Hurricane Katrina if not marketing its jazz and Dixieland music along with Mardi Gras and swirl famous indigenous food. That's an absolute given. How many people think New Orleans could have made a comeback after Hurricane Katrina if it wasn't for their jazz music? The irony is that jazz doesn't even sell much, so why do their customers keep coming back? The answer is to have fun listening to their music and eating their food. The reasons are very obvious. A major bonus is you don't have to pay the money back. The same scenario could exist for Norfolk and Portsmouth. Inasmuch as both cities have agreed to work together, the indigenous music and cuisine is undeniably some of the best music and food America ever made. Many local tunes were hits worldwide. Virginia is the fourth largest seafood-producing state with the best variety of unique exquisite recipes. We have fresh northern and southern fin fish and the very best shellfish. We have talked to Tony Pinto, the General Manager at the Renaissance Hotel, about televising beach music, TV specials, and market vacation packages throughout the world. Our music is the vehicle to market our area to five of the seven point five, seven point seven billion potential consumers on the planet. We have guaranteed worldwide distribution of all media, including TV, internet, social media, print material, and radio. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sue Landerman is listed to speak. Could you give up your time?
No, um, Reggie's not. Reggie's saying.
I'm taking you in the order that you signed up. That's our policy.
Sorry.
My dear friend, Mayor Rowe, distinguished panel, great citizens of Portsmouth, Virginia. My name is Reggie Sands, a Portsmouth native and son of famous singer, recording artist Ida Sanders, a solo duo and a world famous flatters. My father, Noah Biggs, was the legendary record producer and owner of Ship Town Records on Church Street in Norfolk. I'm here to speak in behalf of Mr. Aragona's program. Over the course of my life, there is not one person that would come close to John Aragona when it comes to the ins and outs of music and television. He has no equal. John has been associated with the biggest names in the entertainment industry. He knows more about beach music and rhythm and blues than anybody in the Tyboree area. His reputation for first-class beach music, TV specials, and event stretches from Atlanta, Myrtle Beach, Los Angeles, New York, and many more great cities. His resume includes such stars as Dionne Warwick, Mary Wells, Frankie Avalon, Jerry Butler, Cuba Gooding Senior, The Drifters, Barry White, James Brown, and so many more. If he says we can turn Portsmouth into a vibrant niche tourist destination, you can take it to the bank. His connections are overwhelming and I'm proud to call him my friend. I had the pleasure of staying at his house and ate the best Italian food known to man. Our friendship started over thirty years ago and I'm learning his connections and awesome general knowledge. I am positive that John can make it happen for the city of Portsmouth. Norfolk was instrumental in producing classical, R&B, soul pop, such stars as Doctor Maynard, Jimmy Archer, Dicky Harold, Charlie McClendon, Pat Curtis, Joanne Faletta, and Wayne Newman. Now, I say to this distinguished, uh, panel and the great citizens of Portsmouth, if San Francisco can get millions of tourists to take a cold ferry ride to Alcatraz, then we can get millions of visitors to come take fun ferry rides to Portsmouth, Norfolk, and Hampton. In a meeting last year, the City Manager Hampton said, "They were in." Newport News recognized that it's a no-brainer. Both cities had a slew of famous artists, composers, and producers. Their area's music came out of our intercourse cities of Norfolk, Portsmouth, Hampton, and Newport News and was the roots of beach music. That is emphatically explained in the master plan, which was presented to you guys. All four cities need plenty of money and this is everyone's short ticket to fame, wealth, and glory. My residence is Virginia Beach, Las Vegas. I have two pieces of property here in Portsmouth that I have need to step foot on. I'm ready to come back to real live entertainment. When it comes to gambling, everyone comes to Vegas not just to gamble, but they come for the entertainment. Entertainment is force unites everybody all over the planet. Doesn't matter what your persuasion is, your economic status, or anything else. Pharrell is into music. Look what he did for the city of Virginia Beach. They generated millions of dollars over a period of three days. And this man possessed the knowledge and the wherewithal to bring it to this city of Portsmouth. And I would say humbly, let's make it happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sue Landerman. She has five minutes.
My name is Sue Landerman. I'm a resident of Portsmouth for ten. It is not just visitor development, but economic development. Visitors who vacation here will rent a hotel room, eat at one of the one of the kind restaurants and shop for antiques, marine artifacts, and a host of other memorabilia. There will be shag contests as well as fashion contests for the best-looking appropriate apparel. These contests involve all age groups and will be televised throughout the world with significant prizes for the winners, and the prizes are very high-dollar. The Beach Music Awards marketing plan puts Portsmouth in the region on the world map. Old Town's high and side streets becomes the end place. The success of this venture will also allow us to construct a five-star thin hotel at the O'Halliday Inn site. The nicest weather revolving sky lounge, unique theaters, unsurpassed restaurants, supper clubs, fresh seafood and mouth-watering cuisine. It is your civic duty and moral duty to preserve our indigenous music. No expensive infrastructure is required. It is already here and empty. Our citizens need to be educated about our musical history. All cities have done a terrible job in preserving our homegrown music. Proposals have been written and handed out to several of you over the courses of years and yet not a soul ever responds because no one reads the material we give you. If the powers that be work together, we can accomplish this epic positive change in the destiny of our area quicker than you can say Jackrabbit. Our music is something to be proud of and we are foolish not to showcase it to the world. It is a catalyst to thrust Portsmouth into the big time and a positive cash flow for all. How is it that Mayor, Vice Mayor Charles Whitaker, since 2013, he got it in a nanosecond and even asked to be Chief of Staff? Jim Oliver, our former City Manager of Portsmouth, also got it right away. Then-City Manager John Rowe had a meeting with, with, uh, John Aragona and others and emphatically said, "We are in." Fred Schoenfeld convinced John Aragona to please move to Portsmouth because he thought this sounded like a really good done deal. Do the powers that be expect us and our committee to do one hundred percent of the work supplying paper, ink, buying materials for business, plans, sponsorship, benefits, and TV syndication purposes? Then attend untold, then attend untold meetings, go to Office Max, run around, toll selling, sponsorships, networking, all of which cost money? We have the perfect plan to make Portsmouth one of the most beloved cities in the nation instead of the least desired. The city needs to chip in and help. We need a space to work. And even if it's just sweat equity, an official endorsement of the Beach Music Awards Project is what we are asking for. If Jim Oliver and Charles Whitaker has been understanding, then our current leaders should be able to do the same. It's a must to read the master plan. You're going to be receiving an email tomorrow morning with the speech material and also a book that you can look at, go through at your leisure, and you will be getting the master plan for each of you in very near future. Uh, do not let mu, do not let our music fall into obscurity. God save beach music when America needs it the most. Tony Pinto is ready to go to broadcast worldwide TV specials from the main ballroom. We are not a concert, but TV specials. The TV special never dies. They can be broadcast over and over throughout the world to billions of people and showcase Hampton Roads, Tyboree, or Coastal Virginia, many assets in a unique and positive manner. Thank you so much. Can't you just see Chinese and the Oriental people dancing the shag right now?
Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kentrel Devlin. She has five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Kentrel Devlin. I reside in Portsmouth. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of a comment that was made by one of the elected officials who is absent tonight, Councilman Moody. Mr. Rowe, I remember you made a comment about creating a race relations committee. The citizens of Portsmouth, the people of color, have lost confidence in this council. I'm here tonight to ask for an immediate resignation of Bill Moody and yourself along with the visiting citizens, because the comments that have been made from this council, who is supposed to be elected to represent all bodies, all people, and every citizen in Portsmouth, even though there may be disagreements amongst us, it should not be made abroad. The statements that came from Councilwoman Simmons saying she deserved to be Vice Mayor because she was a white woman, I have no faith that your committee, if you do happen to form one, will be careful as to what they say, be mindful of the citizens that they represent, including the color of people. Moody has always shown his disdain for the people of color by making comments such as, "People on the South Side, their opinion does not matter when it comes to the budget because they don't pay bills," insinuating that because they are less, they put less equality, they spend less in the city, that they don't have a voice. How can we respect a man like that and have him representing fifty-five percent of our city that's people of color? Lastly, I would like to know who in this room has no color? Where are the uncolored people? It is a very ignorant statement, totally racist. So yes, you said you would form a race committee? We have no confidence in you, Mr. Rowe. Councilman Simmons, she made the statement that people can say whatever they want to say. How is that okay? How can this council form a committee to represent people of color with those type of comments being made? I would never tell someone I deserve a position because I'm a black woman. Never. And if I would, this whole city would light up about Kentrel as a racist anyway. And she doesn't deserve it. There is a lack of confidence in the leadership of this council. And it's not just from people of color, it's from all people. I would never walk in a leadership position and make those type of comments. And if I had friends who did that, I would check them, because that's what you do. Are we going back to the days where white people wouldn't accept black blood? Where are we going with this? How far will you go before you're saying enough is enough to your friend, even if they look like you? And no one stepped forward to say that comment was wrong. No one stepped forward to say, "If I was a person of color, that would have offended me." And that's why we do not have change in the city of Portsmouth. However, the people are tired, because enough is enough. We always said we're going to meet you at the pole, but there's a blue wave coming and it's coming for Moody.
And our next speaker is John Maurice Hooks. He has five minutes.
That was all right until I backed into the mic. Anyway, my name is John Maurice Hooks and I'm from Mount Hermon. And most of you would say, "Mount Hermon, where you from?" And that's a little neighborhood in Portsmouth, Indiana. And, um, I'm just returning home to my city three years ago come August. I've been gone forty-six years, but I love Mount Hermon and still where I was born and raised. And, uh, I spoke to you, Mr. Mayor, a couple of years ago. You would come out to my church with back to South Hill Reverend Talbot, and I was singing a solo with the barrel horse that Sunday. And afterward, we, uh, I called you, uh, who's talking about the Mount Hermon playground, play park, basketball court specifically, that is, uh, has been that court since I was a kid. And, um, I spoke to Mark Furlough, who was the head of the Parks Department a couple of years ago, and he said to me that we, the city is doing parks at this particular time. And I said, "Well, where is Mount Hermon Park on that list? You know, what number are we?" And he said, "Well, Mount Hermon Park at that time was, we were ninth on the list." So I, I spoke with you, he said, "Mr. Hooks, if nothing is being done in a time to die, give him some time. And if nothing is being done, you call me back." Well, I haven't called you back, but I thought I'd come here tonight, because the issue of that park, it's in disrepair terribly. When I took a look at County Street Park, of which I have a picture, if I could show you, and the stark difference between County Street, that's as smooth as you could see. You could slide across it without being bruised. But I assure you, Mount Hermon's playground or basketball court, and it is asphalt. Mount Vernon Avenue running from High Street to Port Norfolk is smoother than this court. So I come here today for the children of Mount Hermon who'd like to play out there in that park and not be scarred up, scant up, bruised, damaged, rocks in the palm of their hands and their kneecaps. Am I passionate about this park? Yes, I grew up in this park. And I look at sixteen years later, it's still the same. If County Street can look like this... Like this. Why do I talk to you, Jack? Help the kids. I don't play ball anymore, but I do go out to my rebound when I shoot sometime. And if I fall on that court, I'm going to get those rocks in my hands. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, to the citizen, the park of which you're describing is a project that was undertaken by the municipal river, um, ERC in redeveloping that park. What I will say to members of council, um, we will get with parks and recreation. We will look to see where there may be some more lag in some of our CDBG funds or in some of our C, um, um, capital improvement projects that have been completed with some letter from our funds, but we will look definitely to do something in that area immediately.
Our last speaker is Gary Jackson. And Sergio, you have five minutes.
Hello, I'm City Council. Um, my name is Gary Jackson. Um, what I have right here is I have a life plan that I was trying to set. Um, it's a very good life plan and it works because, um, basically when my, um, my, everybody I, I told about it had new issues, ailments, or problems, or disabilities, and I don't either. And, um, I, like myself, I never been hurt, um, I never killed my girlfriend, and I, I planned a great life, that's, that's what I did. And, um, it really works for real. And, um, basically, I was born here in Portsmouth and, um, I decided that I wanted to be an entrepreneur and be a, you know, a great person and an entrepreneur and be what. So what I did, um, I went to school, I finished, you know, Wilson, um, you know, different schools, I finished that, um, high school and top grades and I went to the office state, I didn't count me in. And what I did, I just dropped my nose down as I went. So I said, you know, as I get older, I want to, you know, keep living great and, well, I had to start working, you know, three, four jobs, seven day over the years, you know. The last two weeks, I worked like three, four jobs in the last two years, um, you know, off the job, six different jobs. But I stayed in my plan and then I took a life insurance and again, I did, um, I learned about life insurance, I looked great, and I added to my plan. So what I did, um, I, I, I used education, everything I used to keep it out real nice. And I'm still a nice, nice person, I'm still good. And, uh, I have full motivation, um, to help everybody, you know, because I want to share my information that, um, that I have with others, because I want people to help. Um, pretty much everybody out here that need help, that, you know, so what I did, I motivated myself to have a great life and, um, like I said, that's basically what I do. So what I'm trying to do is a motivation speaker, um, business, that's what I'm doing now, that's my, um, that's my second month, that's my third month going on, so. Um, basically, my business here, I'm trying to stop the crime and the stress and a lot of things is going on and my plan, I can stop, um, because I ain't worked for people long enough. Um, my family uses plan, we, we're living great, and if you want to live a great life, that's, that's a plan that I have. And, um, invite one, you know, give it a try. Just give me a call at seven five seven, um, nine one eight, one zero five. Now, 1-81057 is my, that's the number, call me at that. You want to, you know, look great, you can still look great, stress-free. And I, I basically have, myself, I have to look stress-free. I've never been impressed my whole life, because I follow this plan, so. All right, so thank you all.
Thank you, sir. This concludes our agenda. Our next council meeting is at 10 o'clock on July the 30th, Tuesday. It's 10 o'clock in the morning in this room. When our economic consultant will present a report, a report on your findings of the Viagold Casino in Portsmouth. Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned.